...to order, please call the roll.
Bergeron.
Here.
Kuss.
Here.
Harris.
Right.
Carlson.
Here.
Olson.
Here.
And Seaberton.
Here.
And West.
Here.
Please join me in the pledge allegiance.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the religion just as for all.
Thank you very much. We've got some laid on the tables on the tree service and perk authorization. That brings us down to persons to be heard. Linda, you want to start us off?
Good evening. My name is Linda Kunsager and I reside at 841 First Avenue. And tonight I represent the Alaska Small Business Development Center. In your FYI part of the packet, you have our first quarter report. And what I just had passed out to you is the goal completion of where I am today. So if you look at that, the counseling hours, the goal is the 500. For the long term, the goal is 18. For new businesses created, it's 11. Jobs created, 20. Capital infusion, $100,000. And success stories are eight. The update on this is that I actually am working on three success stories now. And a success story is when I work with a client who is accompli- excuse me, accomplishing certain benchmarks. And when they reach the completion of a set amount of benchmarks, then they become a success story in whatever stage they're in. So they could be a success story in the think, launch, grow, reinvent, and exit stages. And if they give us permission that is written, then we can actually submit that to the SBA for Alaska's Small Business of the Year Award. And they can also use it in advertising and we can also use it on our website in the section that is success stories. So I wanted to share that with you and if anyone has any questions, I'm certainly willing and able. Dan?
Is it $100,000 or a million dollars? Infusion.
Yeah, it's a million.
Pardon?
It's a million. That's too scary. It's a scary number. I'll really celebrate if I meet that benchmark. That would be a wonderful one. What I want to do is also thank you tonight for your continued support. And I wanted to share with you that the first quarter report that you have is a really fine example of how much time and energy it takes to facilitate six workshop events. That is very time consuming. We had some really exciting things happen, January, February, and March. And one thing that I wanted to share with you is that since January, the center has answered questions or advised 32 people. We've advised eight new clients. And the service industry is the highest representation of clients at 14. And we have counseled eight with startups and four have actually started their businesses. So again, thank you very much. And if you have any questions, I'm available to answer them.
Thank you, women.
Thank you again.
All right. That brings us to William O'Brien.
Top of the evening to you all. I am William O'Brien and I reside at 1428 Ferry Chasm. And I'm here to represent our pub, O'Briens Pub. And my request for to utilize the lot adjacent to the New York Hotel where the old Shamrock used to reside for a St. Patrick's Day event. In my original request to the city manager, to the borough manager, I had requested two days, Saturday and Sunday, possibly to have events on both days. Since I've narrowed things down, I want to have the event only on Sunday. But if I could utilize that Saturday to set the tents up and get things ready and that. I have not submitted the catering permit to the state or the city to have a beer garden because I wanted to see how the board would vote on me utilizing the space. And I'm here to answer any questions. It was pretty basic in my request. And then the other aspect was a possible parade for St. Patrick's Day. And seeing that it's so close to St. Patrick's Day, I read that it may cost the city some money. And my goal is not to cost the city a dime. I think a little procession, what we envisioned was a procession possibly starting at the Discovery Center and maybe calling it the world's shortest St. Patrick's Day Parade. And going from the Discovery Center to the pub and, you know, with some bagpipes and some people. And seeing this is my first year doing this, I think the town could use a little St. Patrick's Day celebration and something fun to do. So I'm here to answer any questions.
Can you refresh me on what time the parade would be?
I think we would gather at 1 o'clock or 1:30 in the afternoon on Sunday to get everyone together. 2 o'clock, we would leave. By 2:10, we would be at our final destination. And I actually have a plan to have a little blessing of the celebration. You know, just something fun.
Dan?
Carl, can you tell me if that revised schedule will negate the expenses that were in the report?
Given what's being described tonight, I don't think the expenses are going to be as much as we had anticipated. I need to talk with Public Works Director and Police Chief, but I'm sure we can accommodate the type of procession that's being proposed.
I've seen longer delays by the horse drawn carriage.
I was going to say, if you've ever, I was going to say, if you ever at 4 o'clock in the afternoon been driving down Togus behind two school buses, it can take a while. It's rush hour. And, you know, maybe if the North Togus Fire Department, they're donating their tents to me. So, you know, maybe they could have a truck and we could follow behind that. I want to make it as simple, but exciting and fun. And this would be the first of hopefully many that then we would have a committee together in the future and plan this a little more, you know, with, you know. I think it'd be fun in the future to celebrate St. Patrick's Day in Ketchikan.
Bob, did you have something?
Yeah. Regardless how short, if we're going to be in the street for a parade, you're going to have to have a permit for that. I'm positive that we'll probably require that. If you were to march on the sidewalk and use the crosswalk?
We're okay.
On the fire truck. Fire trucks.
Yeah.
But I think that if you're going to put any type of parade on a public street, you have to have a permit.
I think this year, let's make it simple. Let's just walk down the sidewalk and with the bagpipers and maybe I could have the fire truck parked out in front or they could do some bells and whistles and just, you know, I want to make this as simple and fun and enjoyment for all.
We'll keep in touch with the manager's office.
I will.
Thank you very much. Go ahead.
I do.
Go ahead.
Getting back to this parade issue just a little bit. I think a 10-minute parade. I mean, again, if we talk about the horse drawn carriages, I think this could be, you know, this could be one of 1,000. This could be the beginning of a new tradition in Ketchikan, or maybe not. Anyway, I don't want to dissuade you nonetheless. I think it's going to be great fun.
Good.
Come down and watch it. You know, a permit for a 10-minute.
We'll work it out.
Okay, good. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. Nice to address you.
Mike Ramsey.
Good evening, Mayor Williams, city council members. I hear we're going to postpone the tree trimming agenda till later because of legal problems?
Regardless anything to that?
That will all be subject to council approval. If a council member wants to move to defer, that would be up to the council.
That was going to be my motion, was to defer this because we need to have some discussion with our attorney. I think there's some liability that the city might, may be involved in if we, I think that your competitor has met the letter of the law, but, you know, some of us want to nonetheless give you the bid.
I understand that.
And then, but if we do that and we turn it around and we get sued and he prevails and then that wouldn't be, we would be remiss in our responsibility for to represent the best interest of the people that we represent. So I would like our attorney to, you know, walk us through this a little bit and talk about some of the alternatives other than a warning and some other things that we might do.
All right. I respect that.
Okay.
Do you have anything else, Mike?
No, I've got some things that I'd like to say to you, but I'd like to remain fresh in your minds. So I'll wait until it's on the agenda.
You know, the question is though, if the deferment doesn't pass, we may miss the point.
We can let him make his statement during the thing if it doesn't pass.
Okay.
No problem. And if anybody's here from Carlos, we'll hear from them too. All right. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Ed?
Good evening. Ed Cushing, Division Manager, KPU Talk Communications. As you know, this evening, I think it's Agenda Item 7B2, we'll be discussing the Verizon Wireless opportunity. So this evening, I simply wanted to introduce Robin Lochner to you. Robin is with Business Development with Verizon Wireless out of lovely Basking Ridge, New Jersey. And he tells me he'd rather be here tonight than there.
You're right.
There you go. But Robin will be with us this evening as we get into that agenda item in the event you have any direct questions for Verizon.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Barb Bigelow.
Hi, thank you, Mayor Williams and city council members. My name is Barbara Bigelow and I reside at 7866 South Togus Highway. I'm here tonight just as a citizen and also as an Arts Council Board Member to just talk a little bit. We just had another First Friday opening at the Arts Council. And we had a very nice exhibit that was curated by Diane Nab, Amanda Painter, Lori Thomas, and Maggie Freitag. And we had over 220 people in the gallery that night. And then there were subsequent, there was a music gala at Carl Ritchie's new club, Creekside Cabaret. And then there was a poetry reading at O'Briens Club the next day in both kind of very popular events, standing room only. So I'm just here to advocate for the arts. And we know that the arts is something, you know, whether you're recruiting for the hospital or the school district or the forest service or whatever, often people ask about schools and art. Those are two topics of interest to people looking at communities. So just here to tell you a little bit about that and to thank you for your support and encourage you to come to the gallery and look at the exhibits.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, Tim, do you want to wait for everybody or do you want to go now?
We'll just take a second. Bob, do you have the mission statement on your machine?
While you're doing that.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Sam Bergeron. I'm on the City Council and I'm also a voting SEPA Board Member. I just wanted to come up very quickly, give you the highlights of our last SEPA meeting. And the reason that I'm doing that is because I've been sitting on the City Council for about three years if you add it all up. But I know very little about SEPA is because nobody bothered to tell me about it. So I'm going to give you just a really quick rundown of what happened. Did you find that mission statement, Bob?
I'm looking.
Okay, well, I'll keep going.
Go right ahead.
SEPA, the SEPA Board adopted a mission statement. And then as soon as Bob finds it, I'll have him read it. I think that mission statement should come back to the council and I should, we should either have a resolution of support or comments because it's a hugely important thing because it talks about SEPA being a voice for the region in hydro development. So you need to take a look at that. And there was, SEPA defined a few projects that we're doing this year to increase storage. And one of them is that we're putting in a stream gauge at Taiyi. And what we're going to do is we're going to clear all the logs away from the top of the dam. We're going to throw a few rocks in. It's going to actually increase the level of the dam. And it's going to increase water storage and power generation if we have the snow melt and the rain to fill it up with. The other thing that we're going to do at Taiyi is that we're going to put a thing called a cooler on, the turbine. And it's a more economical way to cool down the turbines as they're running. And so it's going to use less water and increase storage and electrical generation. A future agenda item for SEPA is going to be a risk management plan. And what that is, is that we're going to talk about what we need in place for reserves and equipment and that kind of the stuff. And that's going to be a pretty big agenda item and very interesting. It'll also talk about what they feel that we need, Mr. Mayor, in reserves. And so, you know, that should be an interesting one. I also talked about the R&amp;R fund while I was there at the table and said that if we could free up some of these R&amp;R projects and increase the kickback to, or the rebate to the communities, that would be much appreciated by all the member communities. SEPA is looking to fill four positions. They are a records management person, a grants administrator, a project manager, and a tech support guy that does SCADA controls and on instrumentation and that kind of thing. And these are positions that are really needed. And these were voted in the affirmative unanimously by the board. And as a note of, did you find it yet, Bob?
I don't have it here, Sam. I don't.
Okay, it'll come back as an agenda item. The last thing that I want to tell you about, under persons to be heard, a guy named James Stoke of the Wrangle Borough Assembly said that the city of Wrangle was going to be approaching the city of Petersburg about the possibility of dissolution of their participation in SEPA. Not that they're looking to do that, they're just doing that as part of a, what do you call that? Their.
Oh, the Joint Action Agency.
Yeah, well, the Joint Action Agency. So they're going to be looking and see if it's in their best interest to pull out of SEPA. And so they might even include us or ask us to be included into a study to see if it's in their best interest and ours. And that is my report.
Sam, are those four positions, new positions, or are they?
Yes, they are new.
So there'll be nine positions out there now?
You know, you asked Bob that. I don't know. What do we got, five life bodies now?
We have one, two, three, four, five.
Right. These positions are really needed. They've got all kinds of stuff.
And I think starting out, Sam, if I'm not correct, you said we're going to combine them so we may end up two to start with until we get projects on.
Right. But he asked for four and we've kind of said, yeah, I get what you mean. So we'll see what he comes back.
Do you want the mission statement?
I do. Would you be kind enough to read it, Dick?
SEPA's mission is to provide the lowest wholesale power rate consistent with sound utility planning and business practices. We exist for the long-term benefit of our member utilities and the ratepayers, providing unified regional leadership for project development and prudent management of our interconnected power system.
That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sam.
All right. Anybody else here? I have nobody else signed up. Anybody else want to address the council tonight? Andrew, come up.
My name is Andy Grandson. I'm with the Ketchikan Police Department and PSEA. I apologize for wearing sweatpants. Wasn't sure I was going to be here and I just came from baseball practice. All I wanted to do today was basically introduce our business manager in general, counsel with PSEA. It's our understanding there's going to be some discussion on the contract status and they're available for questions until sometime tomorrow. Lynn Ketchikan, always on the phone. So Jake Metcalf and Steve Sorenson are available if you guys have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else want to address the council tonight? Seeing that, we'll move on. That brings us down to consent agenda. Bob, did you say you had some monkey one day on? I had at least one out of 7A3, budget transfer to Centennial Building Roof Repair. And I was wondering if we wanted to add either four or five on there? I don't have any problem with five. There are four out. I had a question, but it's not. So we can move forward or you can add a question? All right. So on the consent, we're also adding 7A3, the budget transfer to Centennial Building Roof. Four, budget transfer installing a bowler at berth three. And for number five ordinance 131720, a nuisance thing on the harbor. And that's it. Adam, first me the motion? I move the consent. Second. Madam Clerk, can you read items?
Approval of minutes, regular meeting of February 21st, 2013. Resolution number 132500, CPV grant funding from the Ketchikan Gateway Borough in the amount of $125,000 for the construction of rain canopies at berth three, declaration of excess computer equipment as surplus, Information Technology Department. Vacation of rideaway, a request by the Ketchikan Gateway Borough to vacate a portion of Denzley Drive, authorized the city manager to execute the quitclaim deeds, Linda and David Deal. Change order number two, final to contract number 1048, Ketchikan General Surgery HVAC Improvements with Doss and Construction, Inc., designating April 20th through April 27th, 2013 as spring cleanup week, exempting the procurement of an annual software maintenance agreement from New World Systems from competitive bid or written quotation requirements. Resolution number 132501, accepting amendment number two to municipal matching grants from the State of Alaska Department of Environmental Conservation for the Jackson and Monroe Water and Sewer Manes Replacement. Liquor license renewals for a whole bunch of businesses. Exempting the procurement of substation distribution switches from competitive bidding, HD Supply. Budget transfer Centennial Building Roof Repair. Budget transfer Declaration of Public Emergency for the installation of a double bollard at berth two, Pool Engineering, Inc. And finally, ordinance number 131720, amending the Ketchikan Municipal Code entitled nuisances declared relating to boat harbor facilities first reading.
Thank you very much. Anybody want to have a question? Matt, did you have a question?
Yeah, I just had a question on the bollards. As this was a safety walkthrough, as ships continue to grow, are we anticipating the need to convert any more bollards in the future? Should we just start the process for that?
Port Harbor's Director, Steve Corpron. We might add another bollard or two down at berth three. And I knew that we were going to want to add one, but I thought we were going to do it in the next year or two. And it was during this walkthrough on the 14th that they said they really wanted it this year. And we just didn't have time to get it out to bid and get it installed before the first cruise ship showed up there on April 27th. We've got a couple more that we try to. I think there's probably at least one more we're going to want to add at three, but that's not, it's not something we have to do right now. But it'll just be more convenient and make things easier for some of the ships to tie up. It'll come up this winter then, basically. Yeah, I'll have it in the budget is my plan. We were trying to walk around and put our plan together for next year and the following year with the cruise line folks. And this one came up. What they'd done, they'd gone down and actually started laying out where the lines were going to go for the solstice. And it came down to, well, we really need one right here. And Pool Engineering had done a couple of these for us on berth one before. So the quickest and easiest and cheapest way to do it is just having them do it for us. No, I support. I just was hoping that we're looking to the future and planning so we can do it maybe this winter instead of pushing. Oh, absolutely.
Thank you. Bob? Yeah, this one is for Bob Newell. Bob, under the item seven, it's exempting the procurement of the annual software maintenance agreement for New World. Has New World delivered the product completely as expected? Are we through with their install at this point?
No, we still have some modules that need to be implemented and installed. And we're not completely done.
Is that due to our time schedule or theirs?
It's plenty much due to our.
Okay. Because I just want to make sure that we have something delivered and operational before we enter into a maintenance program. Because as you know, they need to have us a complete product. And then we go into maintenance. And I just wanted to make sure that we're not getting. Curtis, did you have something? Okay. And so I'm a little reluctant if we don't have a completed product to move into maintenance because there's warranty issues if they haven't met the needs that were prescribed in the contract.
That is correct, yes. And we are, we are on schedule with regards to the implementation. And there are certain modules that we have not implemented. And that was by design because our staff could not implement all of the, all of the financial modules. But the critical ones have been implemented and are operational. We still have some bugs we have to work out. And part of that is us just learning how to use the system. And also we did a mid-year conversion. And when you do a mid-year conversion, you're going from an old system to a new system. It's a little bit more confusion than if you start fresh with a new accounting cycle.
So if we're going to do a maintenance contract, when is it scheduled to start?
Actually, the maintenance contract's already scheduled to start. We've already had a contract for one year. This is the second year of the contract.
So we.
And the contract provides maintenance. It responds to questions that we have with regards to operating the system. It also provides us with upgrades necessary to upgrade the system. We've already gone through another release on the payroll system as part of the, as part of the maintenance agreement.
Well, I just want to make sure that we've, they've responded to the procurement contract because I don't want to be paying a maintenance contract when they haven't finished the actual install. I think there's a little bit of.
Well, they are supporting the system. I mean, we are.
They should do that while they're doing installation until they're up and running. Is that part of the contract?
Yes, that's standard protocol for doing that. It is. I know it sounds a little unusual, but it is standard protocol. And we did work with CFOA on developing the agreement that we, the contract that we signed with New World.
We're satisfied with where we're at right now, is it?
Where we are right now, yes. Like I said, there are some bugs that we need to work out, but given where we are right now.
Now, are those bugs warranty or are they part of the procurement contract?
The, it depends on which bug you're talking about. There are some, there are some things that we want to do that we're probably going to have to do a little bit of customized programming. But we're trying not to do that because anytime you decide to customize, it gets very expensive.
Well, I know that when a salesman sells you, they actually get sometimes a few different things. And if they're having to do rewrites to meet the original intent of the contract, that should be on them.
Right. No, I don't disagree with that.
That's all I want to make sure.
Okay.
Thank you, Bob. Okay. Everybody ready for the call or roll? Call or roll?
Harris?
All right.
Kuss?
Yes.
Seaberton?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Bergeron?
All right. That passes unanimously. That brings us to number seven, new business chairman of government, A1, draft fund balance policy. Does anybody want to say a motion? Go ahead.
I have no intention of making a motion because I don't think what we had set up to do was to review something.
I think the manager would love to have us approve this quickly.
They would too. So I don't know how you would like to proceed.
Well, we, you know, nobody wants to make the motion. We can talk about it. If somebody wants to make a motion, we want to vote it up and down. We can do that.
Your Honor, I make the motion.
Okay.
Let's get it on the table and beat it up. Your Honor.
We do have a presentation on this, bro?
Yes, we do.
All right. Well, let's do the presentation first then.
Well, don't we need a motion to get it on the table?
Go ahead.
I move the City Council through the general government and Ketchikan Public Utilities Draft Fund Budget Policy as prepared by Talbot Corabola and Warwick LLP of Portland, Oregon. And as may be modified as determined appropriate by the City Council.
Moving secondly. Carl, do you want to introduce them?
I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Newell.
Bob?
Thank you. This item was put on the agenda at the request of the City Council to review the city's fund balance policies. And in order to make this an effective process, the city manager and I decided it would be helpful to have a third party coming in to help us draft a fund balance policy and to kind of guide us to get to a policy that we can all be comfortable with. In order to make this happen, we hired a Portland firm, TKW. They're a CPA and beer business consulting firm out of Portland, Oregon. And here tonight in the audience is Rob Moody. He's the partner in charge of their auto practice. And he's going to take, do the policy that he put together and be available to answer any of your questions. And we're hoping that at the end of the discussion, we can get some direction from the City Council as to what they would like to see in a draft fund balance policy. So I'd like to turn this over to Bob Moody.
Bob? It's all yours. Do we need to hit some lights?
Do we need to hit some lights?
Good evening, Mayor Williams, members of the council. Other than being horribly overdressed for Ketchikan tonight, I appreciate, I appreciate you making time for me this evening. And I was a little afraid maybe there that, that the thing was just gonna go away and I was just gonna have to catch my flight home. Excuse me. So really what I wanna do tonight is give you a little bit of context into how we got to the policy statement or the proposed policy that's before you this evening. Just in terms of introduction, again, Bob mentioned I'm a partner with TKW. We have a large government practice, so we work with a lot of local governments in Oregon, Washington. And prior to my life with the firm, I was actually a finance officer for small cities in Oregon. So I've worked on both sides of that fence. So that, that helps in a project like this. In terms of background, we took a look at several factors here, including some best practices that are laid out by GFOA or the Government Finance Officers Association in terms of fund balance and reserves. We also took a look at the city of Ketchikan's budgets, their audited financial information, their capital improvement programs. We took a look at that stuff over the course of three years and worked up some averages to try and eliminate any spikes or outliers. We've looked at the current planned reserves over the last several years and, and again, related those both back and forth between budget and actuals, as well as considering those averages. We took a look at both capital and operating requirements of the funds that we were asked to look at because in several of these funds, they're operating type funds, you do have both an operational contingent as well as some capital considerations. And we'll look at those here in just a moment. We looked at other available resources other than reserves. We considered the seasonality of the economy here. For example, the cruise season that drives some of the sales tax receipts, the timing of your boat harbor funds, et cetera. We also looked at the limits on your ability to borrow without voter approval here in Ketchikan in terms of, of ways to generate resources in response to events that can occur. And finally, we looked at some of the things that uniquely make Ketchikan, Ketchikan. And, and part of that is the isolation, if you will, of the community geographically. It becomes very expensive and, and difficult at times to obtain labor, materials, equipment on any kind of a, an advanced schedule if you say have to respond to an emergency or, or have some sort of an event that wasn't anticip, excuse me, anticipated. And then also partially due to that isolation, the dependency of the community on the services that are provided by the city. It's not like there are a lot of other options to go out and obtain some of those services that are provided by Ketchikan. So in terms of operations, you know, there's things, there's things to consider such as the first few months of your year where revenues don't necessarily line up with your expenditures. It's not uncommon to have revenues be, have your expenditures, which are nice and level in some cases throughout the year, exceed what available revenues are in those first few months. And then at the end of the year, the revenues catch up and actually balance things out again. Those ebbs and flows, if you will, and the timing of revenues versus expenditures can create some issues in terms of, of funding the operations of a given fund. Having some reserves in place will allow you to, to weather those ups and downs without having to consider short-term borrowing either internally or externally. Commingled reserves, you know, the city has about thirty-five million dollars of sort of pooled reserves out there. But there are some considerations to take into effect there. You need to look at if there are any restrictions placed on those monies either legally or under the terms of your charter. And there's, you know, there's restrictions on certain buckets of money. You can't always take from the green bucket and put money in the red bucket just because the red bucket's empty. You know, we, we have the same situation in Oregon. You know, the general fund bucket is always the red bucket and there's never enough money in it, you know, for, for whatever operations are, are going on. You also, if you're gonna do some of these sorts of inter-fund loans or inter-fund borrowings, you've got considerations of interest charges between your funds that, that best practices would indicate that you would consider. And, and there's some accounting and budget and reporting treatments that go along with that as well. In terms of using reserves or drawing down reserves to fund short-term operations, that's pretty typically just not a good idea from sound financial practices, only because it's a real short-term solution. The reserves don't last very long when you start funding operations. And they don't, they don't, they don't come back. It takes a long time to build reserves back once you've spent them down. They're in effect one-time monies. So they need to be treated as one-time monies as opposed to operational resources. In effect, what you can be doing is sort of kicking the can down the road, if you will. If you draw down your reserves in your face to, for example, with another economic downturn, you really don't have the flexibility to deal with those issues. And now it, it sort of calls your hand, if you will, to have to either reduce your expenses or increase your other revenue streams in order to keep things in balance and maintain a level of service to your community. And then finally on that, drawing down of your reserves can have a negative impact also on your bond ratings. The, the city enjoys a fairly robust bond rating. And if you were to draw down the reserves that were considered as part of that rating, it can cause the agencies to reevaluate your rating and, and in effect rerate the city, which can also equate to a higher cost of borrowing on future debt issues. So it's just something to think about. Again, all of these things are just considerations as you go through your discussion with respect to what is an appropriate level of reserves. On the capital side, the city has a five-year capital improvement plan for both the KPU fund and for other general governmental capital projects. The capital improvement plan is really there to address planned major replacements and planned significant repairs. It doesn't consider necessarily the unplanned items, and we'll get to that when we start talking about contingencies here at the bottom of the slide. So we took a look at the, the planned costs in the CIP and determined that thirty-five percent of the planned project costs in KPU over the five-year term of the plan are funded from local sources. Equivalently, on the non-KPU funds or the, or the other general governmental capital stuff, it's about twenty-five percent is funded by local sources. So we took that information and, and developed an average annual capital expenditure and determined the funding from local sources. The calculation's not perfect, but it does give us a sense of kind of what level of reserves relate to that capital consideration. This'll make more sense here in just a second when I get to the specific slides on the funds. In considering the levels of, of reserves, one concept, and I wasn't really, this kinda fits on this slide because it doesn't really fit anywhere else, but a concept of funding your depreciation. It's a, it's sort of a best practice. It's difficult to do, but when you have an aging infrastructure, or in, actually in the case here with your, with your new, your new port, or your new docks, the, the stuff you just redid with the port fund, you know, you've got a solid asset down there right now that doesn't require a lot of maintenance. But funding the depreciation on that facility over the course of its life, what that does then is it allows you to have the money set aside so that when it reaches the end of its estimated useful life, you've got the money to replace it. Or if something happens in the interim, it at least gives you a head start on having some money set aside to begin to do whatever repairs or major repairs might be necessary. And then true contingencies, you know, how do you deal with those? These are the things that you just can't anticipate. Were there to be a, you know, a major seismic event here in Ketchikan, you do have some aging water and sewer infrastructure. And if those systems were to be damaged, you know, those are the kinds of things that cause you to want to have some reserves to begin to address the repairs. Sure, you, you have insurance, but insurance takes time. Anybody who's ever dealt with FEMA knows that FEMA takes time. And some, some reserves in place allow you some flexibility and allow you to have some options in terms of working through those challenges. All right, so looking at the specific funds, we went through and tried to identify some, some comparable jurisdictions. So there, the Ketchikan proposed number, the red bar that you see there is the proposed twenty-five percent fund balance reserve for the general fund. Some of the other selections we made, we looked at some here in Alaska that are similar types of, of cities that are port cities. We looked at Bellingham, Washington because they also have a cruise ship dock and a cruise ship economy, if you will, a little bit. Key West is on there for that same reason. And then Sandy, Oregon was selected basically as a, as a jurisdiction that we were familiar with that was approximately the same size as Ketchikan and has some of the same structural issues in terms of fund structures. What this shows you is that with the exception of Sitka and Kodiak, and I'll be honest, I tried to contact the CFO at Kodiak today and was unable to reach him on the phone. But with the exception of those two, Ketchikan at twenty-five percent is right in the ballpark with what some of these other jurisdictions are doing in terms of their general fund. The twenty-five percent is equal to about three months' operations in terms of budgeted expenditures and allows them to address some of those issues in terms of ups and downs and seasonality of revenues. Boat harbor fund reserves, again, twenty-five percent there is an operational component. Juno, Sitka, and Kodiak all have exceedingly larger reserves there. My guess is, and based on some of the information that I saw, they have a significant capital component to those because either the age of their infrastructure or their planning and have been developing reserves towards a major replacement or repair. You don't have that issue, as I mentioned earlier. The wastewater fund reserves, again, operational component, twenty-five percent. If you add on a planned capital component to this, based on your CIP and those averages that I mentioned a little bit ago, that would bring it up to forty-two percent, which is still well below the levels of these other organizations. Again, they have a sizable capital contingency built into their, built into their reserves in these funds. And you folks take care of a good chunk of that with your, I'm sorry. That would be something you would want to consider in terms of setting your final fund balance or reserve figures. You're gonna wanna consider a planned capital component or piece as well as sort of that unplanned contingency capital to address anything that, you know, that could happen and not be anticipated. Solid waste services fund, same kinda deal. If you add in a planned capital component per the CIP, that brings it up to about forty-four percent. And again, you've got unique life cycles at each one of these organizations with respect to their solid, solid waste activities. So there, the comparability is, on this slide may or may not be relevant just because of the unique aspects of each organization. But I wanted to put it up there in terms of, of showing that Ketchikan's level is, is low with respect to the operational side. The KPU fund reserves, again, operational shown there in red. If you add in a capital portion per the CIP, again, it brings it up to about forty-one percent, which doesn't, doesn't move it much on that chart. And again, you'll want, it starts to sound a little bit like a broken record, but you're gonna wanna consider the, the capital side, both planned and unplanned. And finally, the public works sales tax fund reserves, again, proposed at twenty-five percent on the operational side. If you add in the CIP for the planned items, it raises it up to about seventy-three percent. Gets you a little bit closer towards Juno, but also then you've got the capital side of things. These are, you know, capital projects funds in these respective organizations that they're setting money aside for, for major replacements and repairs. So in terms of conclusions drawn on all of those, those data points, what I didn't want anybody to do is get too hung up on the specific data points, but rather take sort of that trended information and take that general message that there's really two components to your reserve. There's the operational component and there's the capital component. And that capital component really needs to look at both sides, whether it's planned or unplanned. Operationally, again, we, we considered those cash flows, the timing of the cash flows across the year. We've already talked about the capital. Some of the risks that are involved in reducing your reserves, should you choose to go that way, again, limited your ability to respond to a significant event, planned or unplanned. It reduces that, that, again, it just takes away some of your options in terms of trying to put together a plan. It is going to have a potential impact on your bonds in terms of the rating agency perspective and the cost of borrowing going forward. And I guess just a quick statement to wrap up that, you know, a policy such as this is really a guideline. The idea is to have something there that helps guide your decision-making and your policy decision-making, both as the council and, and management as you address some of these issues. We have several clients that have set policies in the past and, you know, with the downturn in Oregon in two thousand nine and ten, some of these folks dropped well below their policies for fund balance. But they left them there and they've worked hard to try and get back to them and things are starting to turn down there now. So we're seeing folks get back closer to their policies. So with that, my contact information, but with that, if somebody would be happy to turn on the lights, thank you. Be happy to entertain any questions you all might have.
I'm Hughes. On the capital and the operational, do they make a separate capital reserve or do they store it all in the same account? Do they do that?
It depends. It really depends on the structure that the city uses. Most of our clients will use just the same account. And then there's sort of a designation, if you will, so that they understand. It ties to the CIP plan typically.
Yeah, I just wonder if they separate it so they earmark some of that for cap also it doesn't all... Any other questions for Bob? Bob and then Dick.
Yeah, I agree with you not to get too caught up in the data points when, I used to be the solid waste director. And when you talk about the operational costs and capital costs, as compared to Juno, there were vast difference on that slide. Ketchikan owns its own landfill and runs its own solid waste services where everything in Juno is contracted out. And so they have a liability, that contractor, if the contractor was the way, they have nothing. So it's gonna be really tailored to what we have in our community.
Right. And that was the point of the discussion is just to get you thinking about some of those things.
Thank you.
Dick?
Yeah, I just echo what Bob said. I think without knowing the details of the community, it's really hard to judge what we're doing and what we've got. But I think that since I was the one that probably stirred this pot...
You did.
I will continue.
That's right, there's room under another bus for both of us.
And what really, it really stirred it is one, I guess I feel our reserves are plenty high, if not too high. And in the budget about three years ago, clearly in the statement, it said it was recommended and it was an average of about, I'm gonna say eight percent is for reserves. And so this is three times that. And I don't know, has the world changed that much that we need three times as much to do good business or what? But, I mean, you probably can't answer that because that's, that's part of what's bothering me about having, and I'll speak specifically to the general fund, we've, we've... and I'll speak specifically, the general fund, we've, we've sort of had a policy of 15% and we've whittled on it because we didn't want to raise taxes. And maybe the world and having to have more money in your pocket has changed because I don't have it in my pocket at home. So anyway, we'll have the discussion and I appreciate what you said because it does point something out. So without me going after you, I'll go after the other.
Yes, sir.
When you talk about fund balances, is that a cap? Because these things are, they cycle up and down. We got a, we have $5 million in the general fund. We get a big capital project, we drop it down to 2.9 to, it doesn't fill right up. It takes a while to get back there.
Right.
When we're talking fund balances, that where it should be capped, that's what we're looking to stay at or what we want to achieve? And we know that it's going to fluctuate?
Yeah, we typically express them as minimums as opposed to caps because, you know, having, and obviously there's a political, there's political considerations on that balance. Having a lot of money in the bank is not always a bad thing, but there's political reasons to not, you know, push that to extremes as well. For example, the, the impacts on, on your community, whatever, whatever. But typically, the, the operational point is that 25% and you want to try and stay around that. Obviously, you're going to build up potentially a reserve for capital. Those are one-time monies. And as you spend them down, you're matching one-time monies with one-time costs. And so that makes some sense. You know, you're going to save for something, you're going to buy it and then it's gone. And then you save for something else and you buy it and the money's gone. It's that operational thing that you want to kind of stay in that ballpark. Does that make sense?
In other words, if we set a $5 million benchmark, we'll get no fund. And we have, we consider that we have a project coming down the road that's going to be 2.5. We'd like to try to grow that.
Go to 7.5.
And then bounce it back down, or even a 7, a bounce it back down.
Exactly.
That's what we're looking for.
That's, that's the point I was trying to make with the operational and capital pieces. And you made my point way better than I did.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions for Bob? Ian?
It sounds like this is a similar scenario to what I work with in terms of self-funded health insurance plans. Because ideally, we want to have three to four months of claim reserves.
Exactly.
For the side for future, for future needs. And in a perfect world, it works really, really well. When it doesn't work, it's like a train wreck. And, you know, ideally, I think we'd all like to be able to say we have those three or four months of expenditures socked away and there for a rainy day, but I'm just not really sure how realistic it's going to be for us to actually get to that point.
No, your analogy is actually right on though, in terms of the healthcare side of it. We liken that unanticipated capital stuff to your incurred but unreported claims.
Anybody else? Matt?
Yeah, Bob, what percentages does, isn't it GAAP? What do they call for?
Actually, GAAP, GAAP doesn't set a reserve level. GAAP, the, the GASP will tell you how to report things when, when it's done. The GFOWA is the one that has set the best practices. And theirs range, I think their estimated range, last time I checked, was an absolute minimum of 15% up to, I want to say 28%. And again, it's dependent on what kind of organization you have. You're welcome.
Rob, I'm sorry.
You know what? It's okay. I'm a junior. People have been calling me Bob my whole life. It's not a problem.
Anybody else have a question? Thank you very much.
Thanks for your time tonight. Appreciate it.
Are you in town tomorrow for a little while or are you going on your...
I'm on the first flight out at nine, but I could be available. If someone wants to buy me breakfast, I'd probably eat.
I may talk to you about that. Alright, we have a motion on the floor. Anybody want to address the motion? It's to approve the general government KPU draft fund balance policy. Dick?
Well, I'm not too sure how you would draft it. I think it's out of line from what we've been leading. And it's also, some of this whole discussion was also to be, go around the fact that we've got 15 or 20 reserves there and some of them don't mean anything, some of them got money and we ought to put it in another place. And so like, to me, I thought that's where we were starting and I'm, I'll be honest, I feel trapped that we brought an expert from the outside in here to try to lead me down a path, which isn't going to work. Maybe it works for somebody else that's going to work with me. The numbers I need to see before I can even consider doing this, I need to see some better numbers than what we've got for the, for the funds other than the ones that are showing up on, I think it's page about 114. Because that's only about six funds out of, like I say, probably 15 funds. And some of them are actually even lower than what we've got and from what I heard, they're different. And without being able to analyze this a little bit, maybe have a work session or sit down and talk about it, I just, I can't support what we've got here and say this is what we want as a, as a policy.
Okay, Sam, Bob, then Matt.
Thank you. It's hard to argue with the experts about what sound financial planning should be and what it should look like. Mr. Kuz does raise an interesting point. And, and one of them is, is that we have quite a few reserve funds. And like, if we could consolidate them, I don't know if they're all, you know, that, that, you know, you talk about a work session, we should go through the, our funds in a work session and say what they're there for. And to see if we could consolidate them perhaps, and get us toward our stated goal of 25% reserves. So, you know, that, that would be something helpful. You know, we could all say that we want 100% reserves, but you know, the, the financial reality says is that those are pretty tough to do. But, you know, I, I don't think it hurts to say what, what's, what's optimal. I don't think it hurts to say that, you know, we'd like to see this amount. The reality comes when budget time comes, you know, are we going to put our reserves away or are we going to spend them down a little bit? I think that's what we can do. I don't think that this does any harm at all. I'm probably going to support it. Thanks.
Uh, Bob?
I know Carl's concerned and I'm also concerned. We're probably spending money fast when we're making it. And, and we are drawn on reserves every year. And where I don't disagree that we need a fund balance policy, I'm not exactly sure what it is. So I don't know if this is something we can defer until such time as we get a more realistic number in our own mind compared to the figures that we have in the economy that we're in. We're not going to put a lot of money into this fund with the amount of infrastructure issues we have before us right now. But I do have to say that I'm concerned about the continued drafting of these reserves and dropping them below what, what Carl has told us for years is a minimum. But I guess I'm not ready to move forward on it at this particular time because I just don't have it completely clear in my head. So I don't know if a motion of deferment is in order until we can better address ourselves.
We can, but Matt, you want to talk before we defer?
Yeah. Um, I, I have similar concerns. Um, a major concern for me is we keep hearing from our US senators and our governor and our representative senator that, you know, the federal monies are drying up and now we're hearing the state money is drying up. And here we are fighting for a rainy day when especially the state has lots of money and they're used to giving us assistance. And now we're starting to plan and give them the ability to deny us assistance. And I think that's, I, I think we need to be careful there because the state is more than able to, to assist us and especially the capital improvement plan. I'm not sure if I'm prepared to vote on it until, I'd, I'd like to know what we can take from certain funds and put into some of these funds to help us meet our 25%. Just to see if we can, if we can do that without having to do a drastic increase and then at least start with a budget next year where we know we have to maintain that level. I hate for us to have to start leaving all the other funds in there and reduce some expenditures with an increase and others just to meet balances when if we can, hopefully we can switch some monies around to meet these.
Carl, you know, since we have the list of all of our reserves under 981, for a meeting, can you get us some, just for each council member to understand what each fund's for and what can be touched and what can't? I think most of them can be. I mean, a lot of them are at Bayview and Harbor in specific. But if you could give a thing out so everybody knows what each fund is and what can be done with it, I think that'd be appropriate. Uh, Bob, did you want to make a motion?
I'd move to defer until we have more information. I'm not exactly sure what that's going to be with our busy council schedule.
I'd second that Lou and with the idea that we do need a work session where we can go through each one of those funds, look at the money and determine, attempt to determine what we may want to consolidate and what we won't anymore. We need a work session, but we can't just.
I don't know if we need a work session. I mean, they're...
Well, we need it in here and we need enough time to talk about it.
Oh, yeah. That's what I mean. If he can, because most of all those funds are restricted. I mean, there's not much we can do with them. The only ones that are really that we can rob from, and I mean that nicely, community facilities development, you know, and which we've done economic development, parking, all those were capital kind of things that we've been, hold on to which we have been using and we just sent, you know, sent to the drive down ramp over a million. So, which will be being paid back, so. Uh, but I think if Carl listed what they were and told us, you know, explained every fund to us, I think everybody would get a clear understanding pretty quick.
And if I may, within what is there, we need to know what's capital and what's not capital. Because there's some of these that are inflated with some capital that's been sitting there for a couple of years for a project. And then all of a sudden it's gone because we do the project. Misleading.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to touch on that point if I could for a minute.
Yeah.
We'll provide everything that's been requested. But I heard tonight from council member Bergeron that one of the things that's being looked at very closely by SEPA is risk and what kinds of reserves you need to have to cover yourself in the event of things like we discussed here. No for a fact, we have yet to address stormwater needs that are out there. Just, I'm going to hit on it again because that's what you're paying me to do. The reserves you've got between the general fund and the public works sales tax fund don't even come close to doing the immediate and critical series of improvements that we've outlined for you. I don't expect you to ever adopt a policy that then you're going to fund to meet that. But what we're trying to get on the books is just a recognition that at least as of today, we are underfunded and reserves are not sufficient to meet our needs. We'll get you this stuff. We'll, we'll talk about it at a future work session.
Ian?
That question that you had about what the funds represent and stuff, is that shown on page 122? Is that information that you're looking for on that page?
Yeah, I think that is a description of them. It doesn't...
There we go. They're already there.
Really have the numbers and split, but it's a description of them.
Yeah, that's all I was looking for. Yes.
I know I'm way off discussion on as far as the deferment goes, but as the manager described this, it's, it's a policy and it's a goal is what we're identifying here. Not that we're going to fund to the 25, but we will obviously do our best. And we're going to kick this down the road. We're going to wind up doing this. I think what we should just do is adopt it and not kick the can down the road. You can bring us back the, the, what the funds are and what we can move around. But we can, we should, we should embrace this and, and vote down the deferment and vote this out and move on.
Okay, let's vote on the deferments who are at. Call the roll, please.
West?
No.
Olson? Carlson?
No.
Bergeron?
No.
Harris?
No.
Seibertson?
Yeah.
Kuz?
Yes.
So they failed four to, three to four. Correct?
Correct.
Alright. Um, so the main motion is still on the floor. Um, call the roll.
Seibertson?
Yeah.
Bergeron?
Hi.
Kuz?
No.
Harris?
Hi.
Olson?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Alright, that passes. Um, that brings us to Carl.
We're in a break?
What? Yeah, just one question. So Carl, from, what's your next step in this then?
What we're going to do is exactly what you requested. We will bring back the various accounts that you already generated that, but we'll fill in the gaps that you talked about. Try to provide some explanation if there's any flexibility to consolidate the funds and what within those funds are considered operating and capital, like some of the port reserve or dedicated capital reserves.
Alright, thank you very much. Let's take a five-minute break. Thank you.
Thank you.
We get into this.
So that was the first question I had, kind of, and then, uh, the other comment, the thing, I guess the change that I would like to really see, and I guess it's, to make it easier, is down on page, let's see, what was it? 132, where we start listing the different, uh, items and we put the total cost in, but we, and in the past, we used to have the number of dollars that it changed. It was plus $300 or minus $300.
Right.
And that's a convenient place for me to have that figure anyway, because that means I've got to go back. If I see a difference, I've got to go back through the chart. I'm, I'm bouncing back and forth and this puts it all in one place for me. That, that would help me immensely, the way it is now, but the dollar change is out to the tail end of it like in the old budget.
Well, we do show that change on line item basis in the, in the expenditure page, on page, uh, 131.
I, I, I know.
Okay.
I know it's, I know it's there, but down here is the detailed description of the account.
And what that's used for.
Excuse me.
Go ahead. Um, yeah, I think in, in the past, if we raised or lowered, we put the amount that it was changed by. How, how difficult is that?
That's, that's, that's a lot of work. It is, because we, we do it for the first draft and then we go back and put together second draft and then we have to do it all over again. And then somebody else has to go back and proof it to make sure that we didn't miss anything. So it's a lot of work, a lot of accounts.
The change candidly was based on direction from the council when we started this, that you didn't need all that detail. What you really wanted was a summary of the major changes and that's how that one section of your on page 130 came out. The operating budget changes for 2013 compared to 2012. I mean, if you want it, it is a lot of work, but if that's what the council desires.
Yeah, we'll, we'll do whatever the council, whatever the council wants from the council.
But if we are going to do that, then I would suggest eliminating that other section because it's just redundant. So, on page 130, uh, the operating budget changes for 2013 to compare, compare to 2012. The intent was to show those differences for each account when the difference exceeded $5,000 or more than 5%.
What we were trying to do is allow the council to focus on, on the big changes where the real changes are taking place.
I, I could live without the one you suggested that's up to the top, the short ones. To me, I, I prefer the other one, but that's my preference.
Bob, do you want to add something?
Yeah, Dick, just for your information, when we were doing budget and I did, uh, one for solid waste, one for recycling, one for flexion. If I had any errors in my budget, it was usually in that narrative section because I didn't catch something. That's what happened to me.
Okay, my only question, are we going to keep then the cha, budget change from 2012-13 on that? We are leaving that in there.
You've lost me on what page are you on?
Hold on, I'm moving. On 131, that's where I've known, I mean, I know where Dick wants it, but that's difficult, isn't it? So we are.
If you're asking on the individual line items, we'll continue to show the change, that, that, that won't change. And then it will be reflected in the narrative below.
I could ask one, you can see.
You may.
On page, I think it's on 132. Now, just take, for instance, 510-01 Office Supplies and then the number. Would you be kind enough to make the number bold? Because when I'm flipping through these things, for me, it's the numbers that, that stick to me. If I have one number that's 1,500, I look down, it just helps me find things.
Sure.
And then, so if, if that was bold as well, it would save some eye strain for me.
Okay. Yeah, we can do that, that's what you should have done.
Thank you.
All right.
I think the format's pretty good and then I, I thought our budget last year was.
Thank you. And I already read the things that you guys are already changing, which is fine. I, I like the format too, so. Anybody else?
Matt? I just want to, I, I think all the changes that have made have only enhanced the budget and I, I, I would hate to have staff have to go back and make the changes in the narrative on a consistent basis rather than just in the spreadsheet on the one itemized list that's much less.
Um, if you make a change, you're going to have to go back and change it in the narrative anyway. That's correct. Because the narrative, it's not an automatic connection.
It is not, it's, it's.
If it was, that would be easy, but I mean, it's.
Yeah.
If you're going to make a change in a line item, you've got to go down and change it in the narrative.
That's correct, yeah.
So you're making those changes anyway.
You're pulling that line anyway.
Yeah, you have to go down there and do it. Anything else? All right, um, call the roll. So Carl, are these directions fine enough?
Yeah, I get the sense that it's not unanimous, but the majority of the council would like the narrative to reflect the dollar changes from the preceding budget year in terms of the individual line item appropriations. If that's the majority view, that's what we'll do.
Is that what everybody wants to do or not?
Yeah.
Yeah. All right, all right, thank you very much. That brings us down to 786, request for, uh, to conduct a St. Patrick's Day parade in, um, use of the parking lot. Uh, go ahead.
I would the city council respond to the request of Mr. William O'Brien for the use of the former Shamrock parking lot for the purpose of live entertainment and the sale of beer and to conduct a St. Patrick's Day parade on March 17th and 18th, 2013, as determined appropriate by the council.
And I think he mentioned it's only going to be on the 18th, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so we'll cancel the 17th.
I, just put, if, I, for the 17th would be to set up the parking lot with the tent so that.
Understood.
I'm not at 7:00 AM.
Yeah. Sam, you made the motion.
Well, I think, yeah, I, I think it's great, let's do it. And, and the other thing I would like to say is, you know, if it's got a 10-minute parade, I don't think that the city should be taxing him for a parade permit.
I think we've got the direction of the council mystery.
Yeah, we got a couple of comments here, we got Bob and Deanne.
Um, you're going to be working on a lot anyway, it doesn't make any difference whether we do it for two days or one day, so. I, I think give you the two in case something comes up. Uh, I'd hate to restrict you because you're trying to be the, the good guy and say, I'm only going to do it here. So the two days are fine.
Deanne?
I think it's a wonderful idea and I pray for good weather. My only concern when it was presented was, I don't feel like the city should pay the cost of, and you seem like you've taken care of those things. And I don't want that to sound petty, but I just hope in terms of, you know, cleanup and, and any other issues that come up, you know, that it's well maintained and, and that it can go on from year to year to year.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And become something that everyone can enjoy.
All right. Thank you. Call, call the roll. Matt?
I just have a, I'm just reading through this again and again and I keep seeing 17th and 18th and then I see 16th and 17th in the notes. Is the 17th and 18th the weekend?
Yeah, it's Saturday the 17th, Sunday. Or no, forgive me. Saturday the 16th, Sunday the 17th.
Okay, and I think the motion has 17th and 18th, so.
I'll make the correction.
We'll do the correction.
Yep.
And that's the only thing, just in the motion.
Call the roll please.
Carlson?
Yes.
Harris?
A resounding yes.
Olson?
Yeah.
Bergeron?
I twice.
Seibertson?
Yeah.
Kuz?
All right, that passes unanimously, that brings us down to.
Thank you, you're all honorary pieces of the parade then.
Oh, thank you.
Unless you are.
7, um, B1 is the contract on utility tree pruning Carlos Tree Services.
The honor.
Bob?
I move the city council deny the appeal of Alaska Tree Expert Company for the awarded contract number 13-03 Utility Tree Pruning, um, awarded to Carlos Tree Services in the amount of $170,000.
Second.
Move and second it. Bob?
You know, I, I've looked at this long and hard and, and I know that there's been, uh, members of the community voice their opinion, but we, we provided the local preference. The documents were prepared by, uh, our staff, uh, I think there was no anomalies or anything in it. I think it all went fine and went out the bid, they're bidding apples and apples. And in this particular case, one company seemed to have sharpened their pencil a little bit more than the others. And I guess I have a hard time when, when they put all the work into this. If there's not a real good reason to uphold appeal, um, I just don't think we're doing good business, so. I appreciate the work that everybody's done, uh, I, I talked to the staff and, uh, they would be happy with either one of these contractors, I think they've worked with both of them in the past. They both provide a, a quality service and, um, so I'm, I'm looking to award it to Carlos and those are my reasons.
Sam, did you want to do something?
I'd like to take, take this off until the lawyer comes back. I want to see if there's any way that we could, if there's anything that we could do to keep it local. That's all I'd like to do is to put it off for a couple of weeks and so. Are you, anything else you want to say? Because I was going to make a motion to defer and I hate cutting off debate.
No, I'm, I'm fine.
Thank you. With that, I move to defer till the next regular meeting.
Second.
Move and second it. Um, call the roll on the deferment.
Hey, Harris?
Hi.
Kuz?
Not really, okay.
Is that a yes?
Is that a yes or a no?
Yeah.
Yes. Okay. All right.
Seibertson?
No.
West? Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry, she's not here. Carlson?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Bergeron?
Hi.
All right, it's deferred till the next meeting, um, five to one. So, this will all come back, when's Mitch get back?
He'll be here at the next meeting.
How many council members will be here?
I will be, I'll have to be telephonic.
What's next week?
Deanne will be gone.
21st.
Deanne, are you calling in or not?
Yeah.
And Marty will be back.
As far as I know.
As we're waiting for that, can we, I mean, I know we didn't discuss a lot in terms of the deferment, um, but, um, I guess I, I still don't get our understanding. Carl, could you, do you have any input on this that, that you need to? Our staff, either way.
From the manager's perspective, and I'm not the attorney, so let me make that clear. My understanding of the code, uh, there is not a basis that I think you can find in the code to approve the appeal of Mr. Ramsey can award the contract to his company. Carlos was the low bid, even after local bidder preference was factored in. And my, my understanding of the code is that that mandates you to award the contract to, to Carlos. Again, I'm not the attorney, so I think that's.
Is it going to cause us any delays if we put it off two weeks?
No.
No.
Because of all that reconsider.
All right, well, it deferred it, so let's, um, move on. That brings us down to, um, item 7B2, ordinance 1317, 1718, Surplusing Federal Communications Commission's, um, Advanced Wireless Service License for the area outside of Ketchikan Gateway Borough, exempting sale said license from competitive bidding, proving agreements between the City of Ketchikan, KPU, and Selco, Selco Partners, Verizon Wireless, first reading, which is the, go ahead, let's have a motion first.
We have two motions and we have to do both of them, is that correct?
Yes.
Talk about this before we make the motion.
Well, let's get it on the table first.
The honor, I'll, I'll do the first one. Um, I move the city council approve and first read in order to number 131718 declaring the Federal Communications Commission Advanced Wireless Service License for the area outside of Ketchikan Gateway Borough to the surplus city property exempting the sale of said license from competitive bidding or sale by auction. Our other process approving a LTE enrolled America Master Agreement, a spectrum manager lease agreement and a licensed purchase agreement, all being between the City of Ketchikan, DVA Ketchikan Public Utilities and Selco Partnership, DVA Verizon Wireless, provide for the filing of the referendum edition and establishment effective date.
Second.
Move and second it. Carl, this is the 4G spectrum that we own over Juneau?
That, that's correct, Mr. Mayor.
We're selling it to Verizon for $409,000.
If I could, I'd like to ask Mr. Cushing to come up and give a brief overview of the transactions governed by this ordinance.
So Ed Cushing, Division Manager, KPU Telecommunications, regarding the, um, proposed license, license purchase agreement. This has to do with the AWS spectrum that KPU purchased several years ago for, for all of southeast Alaska for approximately $157,000 or $159,000. In keeping with the larger, uh, 4G contract that we've been negotiating with Verizon Wireless, they have an interest in acquiring the eight, the non-Ketchikan portion of KPU's existing AWS spectrum. And they made us an offer of approximately $407,000. We did seek a professional appraisal of the spectrum because this is kind of an unusual, uh, asset and it's not every day you sell an asset of this type. The professional appraisal came back at roughly $179,000. So, all in, if we originally purchased this at roughly $157,000, we've been offered $407,000. We will experience closing costs of roughly $50,000 as we work together with Verizon to move this through the regulatory process at the FCC, but those are the moving parts.
The honor, you bid.
Um, what is the American Master Agreement?
Well, as, as you know, we've been negotiating with Verizon for a number of months now about entering into a partnership or in which, uh, Well, as, as you know, we've been negotiating with Verizon for a number of months now about entering into a partnership where in which, uh, KPU would partner with Verizon Wireless to introduce four G LTE service in Ketchikan. The essence of, of our efforts is we have a contract that we've negotiated and the contract, uh, has a master agreement. The master agreement defines virtually every aspect of the partnership. Incorporated in the master agreement is a spectrum manager agreement and, uh, in order for us to enter into, uh, this partnership with Verizon, part, parcel of this, uh, partnership, we will lease Verizon's four G spectrum in Ketchikan. And the spectrum, uh, manager agreement covers the lease of that spectrum, if that makes sense. So, spectrum manager agreement is part of the, incorporated into the larger, uh, master agreement.
We're leasing everything and then we're leasing that.
Yeah, the moving parts of the, um, the contract with Verizon basically go like this. KPU will build and operate and manage the local radio infrastructure in Ketchikan. Um, second, uh, KPU will establish the off-island circuits to the Verizon core in the lower forty-eight. Uh, third, we will own the customers, KPU will, will sell to the customers and own that relationship. In turn, KPU will receive roaming revenue from Verizon. So if a Verizon customer visits from the lower forty-eight or an international area, visits Ketchikan, for example, on a cruise ship, they'll roam, their traffic will roam on KPU's network and Verizon will compensate KPU for that roaming activity. Just as on a much smaller scale, KPU will pay Verizon outside of Ketchikan if a customer we've signed up is in Manhattan or Seattle or wherever. Verizon in turn provides the core switching infrastructure, the billing capability, the hardware and software that our local radios are tied to, which is why we need the circuits off-island to connect to Verizon core. And then, as we just discussed, we lease Verizon's, uh, southeast Alaska spectrum in Ketchikan to make all of this work. The reason we do that, rather than use our own spectrum, is the only viable way for KPU to go into this business is to partner with Verizon. And to partner with Verizon, we need to use their spectrum instead of the spectrum we have. The, the lease of the spectrum itself is, the cost of that is sort of de minimis compared to the overall cost of operating the partnership.
So, I guess the, the real question is, when a cruise ship's in, will I be able to get through the grocery line at the grocery store with my credit card?
Only if you're a KPU customer. Other than that, no problem.
Any other questions before we call the roll on the sale?
Could I ask?
You bet.
Did you, did you say that when, um, people using this network are off-island or in other places, that KPU then pays?
Verizon for their roaming activity, yes.
Is that significant? I mean, is it...
In insignificant compared to the totality of the volume. To put this in rough numbers, Verizon has roughly thirty-two to thirty-three percent of the wireless customers in the United States and essentially the world. If you run the numbers then on that against the number of cruise ship customers who visit Ketchikan in, in average year, as compared to the number of customers we might sign up locally who might end up in Seattle or off-island, it's...
Well, I mean, there are instances, you know, where, um, families go to other locations for extended periods of times and those type of things, so...
Yeah, it's a good question, but it's just...
Dick?
I just heard pay them. I was just...
I, I was watching.
Dick, go ahead.
The first motion here is nothing except we're selling part of our license.
Exactly, so we're selling the non-Ketchikan portion of the AWS license.
So, the mind really, real question's gonna be whenever you get into the KPU wireless company, or whatever you're gonna call it.
Actually, the first motion declares our license a surplus. We have to do that. And then it approves the variety of agreements between the city and Verizon. And the second motion actually approves the license purchase agreement between the city and Verizon.
And then the next meeting, we have two more.
They'll have to come back in second reading, yes. Uh, the ordinance will have to come back in second reading.
Yeah, I understand.
I'm sorry.
Well, let's call the roll on the first motion.
Well, I just wanted to know what this does to our plans for global domination and development.
KPU's plans for global domination? We're gonna, we're gonna start with Ketchikan and work our way out.
Resistance will be futile.
Call the roll, please.
Olson?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Bergeron?
Aye.
Harris?
Aye.
Seaberton?
Yes.
Kuz?
Yes.
All right, can we have a motion, the second motion to actually agree on the bill is?
Your honor, I move the city council approve a license purchase agreement in the amount of four hundred and nine thousand three hundred and seven between the City of Ketchikan, DVA Ketchikan Public Utilities, and Selco Partnership, DVA Verizon Wireless. And directing the general manager to execute the agreement immediately on the behalf of the city council and authorize the general manager to file the requisite FCC application prior to the effective date of the ordinance.
Do we have a second? All right, moved and seconded. Um, this comes down to the four hundred and nine thousand three hundred and seven. Call the roll.
Seaberton?
Yes.
Bergeron?
Aye.
Kuz?
When are we gonna have a meeting?
If we approve these, we don't need a meeting. They just explained it all here. It's just that we wanted to have a meeting, executive session.
These will come back, the, the ordinances will come back in second reading at the meeting of the twenty-first. I will provide executive sessions at that meeting if the council is open to mine.
Yes, on this one here, then I'll start asking questions.
Harris?
Aye.
Olson?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Hey, that passes six to nothing. Now, it brings us to ordinance thirteen seventeen nineteen, uh, exempting the purchase of indefeasable right to use capacity from competitive bidding and approving the IRU purchase agreement between GCI Communications and City of Ketchikan Public Utilities, first reading.
Your honor, can I get called?
Wait, you?
You have it in English.
Yeah, hold on. Do we have a sec, um, do we have, um, a motion?
On seventeen nineteen, your honor. I move the city council approve and first reading ordinance number thirteen seventeen nineteen exempting the purchase of indefeasable rights to use IRU capacity with competitive bidding and approving the IRU purchase agreement between GCI Communications Corp. and the City of Ketchikan, DVA Ketchikan Public Utilities, and establish an effective date.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Carl, do you want to address this or head?
I'm gonna have Mr. Cushing come back up.
This is the other issue we've been talking about.
Okay, once again, Ed Cushing, Division Manager, KPU Telecommunications, tee this up.
Great.
Please.
Tell me what indefeasable means.
I'm sorry.
Indefeasable.
Indefeasable is a term of art which in this context essentially means by virtue of writing a check to GCI, we own a portion of the undersea fiber optic cable between here and Seattle, as opposed to the way we presently purchase capacity from GCI, which is essentially a month-to-month lease. The best way to conceptualize it is the difference between buying a condo or the right to use a condo for fifteen years versus renting a condo on a month-to-month rental. That's the essence of it. So, uh, in teeing this one up, in keeping with some of our previous conversations, KPU presently has a, a month-to-month arrangement with GCI by virtue of a, a three-year agreement, where in which we lease capacity on their undersea fiber cable, which we utilize to provide internet service to retail customers in Ketchikan. We presently lease approximately two hundred and seventy megs of capacity from GCI and for that, we write a check annually for essentially six hundred and sixty thousand dollars. The real, our fundamental reality today is we need more capacity. Our customers are seeing slowdowns during peak periods and if nothing else were to change, we have to add capacity beyond the two seventy. Additionally, when we go into the four G business, we will need more capacity for our off-island links. We ultimately ended up negotiating with GCI for a better deal and we have, uh, put together a proposed contract where in which, again, instead of paying them month-to-month, we'll do an IRU or indefeasable right to use, uh, capacity on their undersea cable. The moving parts go like this. We pay GCI approximately one and a half million dollars upfront. Will achieve, uh, six times our present capacity. Our per meg price essentially reduces by approximately seventy-five percent. It gives us the immediate ability and ongoing ability to, uh, offer a higher quality of service to our customers, a faster, uh, richer service. Gives us the ability to get one of our higher, our, uh, uh, four G LTE circuits down to the lower forty-eight. Puts us in a much better, uh, position to compete on a local level. And if we were to factor in, and basically gets this all done on an ongoing basis, including depreciation, interest, and debt repayment, uh, spending all in roughly a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year less than we are now, that will have increased our capacity from two hundred and seventy megs to roughly seventeen hundred megs. Having said all that, if we were to, last numbers I think I'd share with you in this regard, just on the comparison I gave you, of course, over ten years, that saves us one and a half million dollars, but it's not the right comparison because we can't continue to spend just six hundred and sixty thousand dollars like we are now. We need to greatly expand it just for... The internet piece, we'll easily be spending a million dollars a year, uh, within the next twelve months on internet capacity alone, times two, when we factor in four G. So, as a practical matter, a year out from today, at today's rate, we'd be paying GCI two million a year instead of six hundred and sixty thousand a year. So, this represents savings to us on, just on a pure savings basis of millions of dollars over the next ten years. Not to mention it puts us in a position where we can compete, uh, where we can better negotiate capacity on a going-forward basis if we need it. And, uh, it's, uh, as with four G, it's a critical component to KPU's long-term success. So that, that's the essence of it.
Did you say this is a ten-year agreement?
It's essentially sixteen years.
Sixteen?
Yeah.
And so that, we give them the one point five million, we cover the full sixteen, or we pay them one point five and then seven?
What we're doing is, there are several moving parts. The one point five million gives us the indefeasable right to use seventeen hundred megs of capacity, uh, until the, uh, end of the period. Part and parcel with the agreement, we agree to, I'm pausing because I'm trying to re, recall what in our nondisclosure agreement say, I think I'm okay with what I'm about to say. We agree to purchase the first five hundred megs of our internet capacity requirement for a price that's roughly seventy-five percent less than we pay them today per meg. Beyond that initial five hundred, which will leave us roughly twelve hundred megs of additional capacity, which will terminate in Seattle, we can buy capacity from anyone we want for the best possible price. I can share with you that in, in Seattle, the going rate for per meg for internet, based on a bulk buy, is less than a dollar. And we're presently paying two hundred. That's the magnitude of what we're talking about here. And that's not to paint, GCI is a bad guy. We're not in Seattle.
Yeah, I understand.
We're here, you gotta get there, but, but that's the sort of order of magnitude.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else have any questions? Dick?
Yeah, um, about a month ago, you laid out a piece of paper on the table that showed GCI's internet service, which was twice our rates and, or twice our speed and half our rates. Does the public benefit?
I don't recall it's half our rate, but presently, KPU tops out its service offering. The vast majority of our customers, I call them retail customers, at five megs. GCI has packages at twenty, twenty and twenty-two megs. We will, uh, at a minimum, match the capacity of their packages and we'll have more attractive pricing than they have. Absolutely. I think that's how we'll compete. So that, that's what we're...
At least we've got to compete. We can't be like the old telephone company, which was the big player.
Oh, absolutely.
The, let's see. So, we're saving five million dollars by not building the, the radar, the radar radio sites, right?
The original, uh, budget to build the radios to Canada was one point nine million. And the budget to build, uh, excuse me, the budget to purchase the IRU is one point five. So it's four hundred thousand dollars less to buy the IRU, um, which has slightly more capacity, lower operating costs, and, uh, provides redundancy for the internet capacity. So we'll...
And if I read this correctly, uh, whatever we're gonna call this wireless company, uh, for the city, cause we're gonna buy telephones from somebody and we're gonna sell them to AJ over here for a price and he's gonna, he needs forty, like, or whatever it is, he needs a faster.
I'm sure of it.
Uh, so, we're gonna have a full service, so the telephone, just like, uh, GCI or AT&T does down here in the office?
Uh, exactly so. Exactly so.
Deanne?
We're not going to have a need for that radio tower thing later.
I, you know, in, in... I don't wanna make predictions. It's, it's, it's difficult. We don't know what business strategies may, may unfold, short-term or long-term. If, if you wanna have that discussion, then I think you're getting in an area where we probably will need to go behind closed doors.
Dick?
Yeah, another question. You mentioned several numbers here. Uh, right now, we're getting two hundred and seventy megs for six hundred and fifty thousand, sixty a year.
Pardon?
Two seventy a year.
Per, it's, we use, we have a permanent connection, if you will, between our office and GCI out to the internet, plus two hundred and seventy megs in size. We pay roughly fifty-four, fifty-five thousand dollars per month to GCI for that connection. It works out to roughly six hundred and sixty thousand per year for that.
And we're entitled to use, if I'm doing this right, it's two hundred and seventy megs per year?
Well, you can't quantify it that way. It's, it's sort, uh, how would be the analogy? If you, it's like, you subscribe to a hundred TV channels and you pay me a hundred dollars a month. As long as you pay me a hundred dollars a month, you have a hundred TV channels. In the case of our existing relationship, our present relationship with GCI, we need a pipe that's this big. It costs us fifty-five thousand dollars a month and by virtue of having that pipe, our network is connected to the internet and our internet customers can do whatever they want on the internet. Problem is, our existing pipe we have is this big, but really need it to be this big. And over time, we need it to be this big. If we keep paying GCI the rate that we presently pay them, which is two hundred and three dollars per meg, we'll ultimately get into a going-out-of-business sale because you can't afford it. The rent's too high.
So, this seventeen hundred meg pipe is all ours and we could shove however much we can get down.
Exactly so.
Exactly so.
It's a good piece of business.
Oh, it's okay. I'm just trying to understand how the sixteen years on the megs of...
All right, anybody else before we call the roll? Call the roll.
Kuz?
Uh, yes.
Bergeron?
Aye.
Harris?
Aye.
Seaberton?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Very good. Two good moves. I think that's counsel. It's really good. And good work for the, on the management end of it, Carl and Ed and Kim. I was thanking you guys for your good work. Um, that brings us down to, um, vouchers. We have a motion for vouchers to Daily News for fifteen hundred.
Your honor, I move for approval of vouchers to the Ketchikan Daily News in the amount of one thousand five hundred and thirty-two dollars and ninety cents.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Call the roll, please.
Carlson?
Yes.
Harris?
Aye.
Olson?
Yes.
Uh, Bergeron?
Aye.
Seaberton?
Aye.
Severson?
Yes.
And Kuz?
Yes. Okay, that passes six to nothing, that brings us to managers' reports. Carl, do you have anything to add?
I do, Mr. Mayor. We did submit a report to you with the sixty-five percent design review on the drive-down float, unless you direct, otherwise, we're going to be forwarding that back to PND to take it to ninety percent design review. On phase three of the verse one and two, we're at ninety-five percent, we're going to finalize that and take it to bid, again, unless directed, otherwise, by the council. At your next meeting, you will be getting a report from me and the Public Works Director relative to our budgeted capital improvement projects, given the status of litigation that we talked about a couple of weeks ago, as well as staffing and the redeployment of staffing that the litigation is going to necessitate. There are going to be CIPs we're not going to be able to get to, and we're going to quantify those for you at the next meeting and suggest possible uses of the funds relative to other CIPs that we do have to get to this year. So, we'll be bringing that forward for your review. The last one, we laid on the table tonight, Ferg did in fact give us writing, written authorization to construct Whitman, it's well underway with Dawson. If at any time the council wants to go down and view the construction site, we can make arrangements, if you want to call us in advance.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions? Other managers?
Carl, we do have a scheduled meeting in Ketchikan for SEPA in April, I believe it might be the... Twenty-fifth. And as we talked before, I think it would be worthwhile for us to do a tour of the Whitman project and have Jenny give us a presentation.
I'll arrange for that.
Thank you, I'll talk to her, we'll get together with Trey and figure it out.
That was for the twenty-sixth, I wasn't involved.
Well, they'll figure out what the day works best for us. I think we're on for the twenty-fifth.
Twenty-fifth, Dog and Pony Show is twenty-sixth.
I don't know how it works.
They'll figure it out between them.
Ian, do you have something to add?
I wanted to ask, under the library minutes, there was that mention about the windows that we're still having a problem, and I know that back in February it was identified, and driving back and forth in front of there every morning at five on the way to the rec center, and I still see windows. Olson?
Dawson is still working with the subcontractor to correct the problem.
Isn't there any way to just close them?
Can't close the windows because it's going...
Can we put something up in front of them, something, I mean, I can't imagine that.
We talked about this at our weekly meeting on Tuesday. Yes, we're losing a small amount of heat, but if you try to close those windows, as it's been explained to me, and Cliff, if you want to come up and help, those windows are part of the air circulation and pressure system within the building, and what we were told...
Will do more harm than good by closing them. Will offset the balance of the entire system.
It's so odd to drive by at five in the morning and see them open.
I couldn't agree more.
But Dawson is actively working with the contractor.
I've heard, you know, kettle but that, they've been fixed a few times, and then they have problems again, and...
They've tried different approaches, they have not found a successful solution yet, that's just putting it out there as it is. But Dawson is committed to getting the problem resolved.
All right. Let's go to City Clerk's file.
Just two things, Your Honor, I'd like to remind the council that the two thousand thirteen approved final budgets are available for iPad download, you just need to go to Box and get them, they're in a special folder that says two thousand thirteen budgets, so they're all there. And the other thing is to remind those who have not turned in their financial disclosure statements to do so, it's due by April fifteenth.
Thank you. All right, City Attorney's file, not here. Future agenda items, anybody have anything they want to add?
I do.
Go ahead.
The SEPA mission statement for crossing of the city council.
We'll put it on the next meeting. Mayor, Council comments, KJ?
Yes, sir.
Bob?
We did have SEPA meetings in Rango, I think they went very well, I'd like to congratulate Sam, he's our new Secretary of Treasury, he does a wonderful job in tennis. John Jensen was elected as Vice Chair, and I was elected as Chairman. I think the interaction at the meeting went well, and we're looking forward to getting some stuff done.
Matt?
Oh, yeah, I tried to access SEPA board packets from the website and was unable to, is there a way that we can get access to those?
I'll share, SEPA should be telling you how to do that.
Boards, it says packets, get packets.
It said it's required to log in when I tried it, so...
Really?
Yeah.
It shouldn't do that.
It may be unapproved or something, I...
Ian?
I noticed that there was a recognition for a PC network technician, Terry Bills, that was mentioned in here, and I just wanted to draw the attention to that because the comments that the gentleman made from Novell were really very, very nice, and it's nice to see people acknowledge things like that, and he says in here he works over five hundred service requests every year, so he's obviously a busy man. But what this also tells me is that we have some really talented people in those departments, and again, I go back to cross-training or training from within to fill the positions that we have such a hard time filling over and over and over again. And I see this kind of a glowing report for someone, and I wonder, are we utilizing, are we building from within when we have this kind of talent? I don't know specifically what his technology talent is because I don't understand all those different things, but it's obvious that other people recognize it, so I just hope that we recognize it ourselves and do something to capitalize on it.
In the case of IT, we clearly do that all the time. Terry works very closely with his fellow employees, passes off that knowledge to...
Thank you, Bill. Thank you, Ian. Sam?
I just want to say that being on SEPA board is, it's a political nightmare, I mean, you know, when these guys, when the guy, Joe Nelson, he kind of looks up and he says, "Well, at some point in the next meeting, we need to start talking about use water that belongs on the dam raising of Swan Lake." And that's an incredibly complex question. You take it up with the true-up agreement, that's what we have to figure out, I mean, what we owe SEPA when we generate power with our little generator. And then you take into account the diesel protocol, and all of this stuff that SEPA, you can quickly get a brain cramp, fall over, and just, you know, blackout. And it's so, it's really complex, and, you know, it, you know, just look at it from, it's kind of baffling to me how come it's set up to be so cumbersome, but I would just admonish the council to download those packets, take a look at that stuff, start asking some questions, read some of the news articles that's going around. People are making questions about what's going on with SEPA, and I think everybody should know what's going on with SEPA, it's incredibly important. So, just blowing up a little. But other than that, it was a real fun meeting, real interesting, we had some real interesting debates. I jumped up and gave a SEPA report because I've been on this council for about three years, and I know nothing about SEPA until I started to get involved in it, so I jumped up and thought, hey, why don't I give the world's first, at least for Ketchikan, a SEPA report, just hit the highlights, and, you know, there was a lot of stuff I left out, obviously, so if you want to know more, call me later and we can chat about it, but please pay attention to what's going on, it's important stuff.
Thanks, Sam, Dick?
Yeah, maybe there's still more follow-up on SEPA, it was a good meeting, a number of people from the community of Rango showed up, and they had opposing opinions on various things, so that indicates that SEPA is probably doing something right, but I think that, my impression is that, for the most part, except for some agenda items by individuals and so forth, SEPA board wants, is working together cooperatively, and for the betterment of the communities that are getting pretty cheap power and looking to the future, for make sure we've got that power in front of us. So, and I would say, don't believe everything you read in the paper.
Anything else, Dick? All right, that brings us down to an executive session, we have one executive session now, one that me and Mr. Severson can neither be a part of, so we'll put Mr. Kuz in charge of running it, but we do need a motion.
I would like, I don't think you guys have a conflict of interest, I think you both are telling it. I would like to have a vote, because I know you both have relatives, but you're not taking any money from them. I just don't think you've got a...
Well, then, let's bring that up, with Mitch is the one that instructed us to, he thought best that we didn't go in, so I'd rather wait until Mitch was here at the following meeting before we brought that up, make sure he was here. Sam?
I think it's a good idea that you guys recuse yourself, make it, just get up, walk away and let us take it from here, because when the agenda items come up, like has to do with KSC, they're my employer, I don't have a direct culinary interest in that, somebody could do the math and have it have the appearance we provided, we don't need to go there. I mean, I think that you should just recuse yourself, we'll go and discuss it, and we'll move on from there, that's what I think we ought to do.
Okay, well, we're on the executive session for collective bargaining agreement between the city of Ketchikan and the Public Safety Employees Association. Do we have a motion, please?
Your Honor?
Go ahead.
I move that the city council declare that consistent with the city manager's memorandum dated February twenty-second, two thousand thirteen, is in the best interest of the city to discuss negotiations regarding a collective bargaining agreement between the city of Ketchikan and the Public Safety Employees Association in executive session. In accordance with that finding, the city council go into executive session in accordance with KMC two point zero four, point zero two five A one and B two, and AS four four point six, two point three, one zero C one and three, to discuss said negotiations and the auxiliary items described in the city manager's memorandum dated February twenty-second, two thousand thirteen, which members include the need to discuss subjects the knowledge which would have an adverse impact upon the finances of the city and upon the city's ability to negotiate favorable labor settlements.
Move it in second, and call the roll, please.
Bergeron?
Aye.
Olson?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Kuz?
Yes.
Harris?
No.
Okay, that passes four to one, Bob abstains from it. Me and Bob can't go into the meeting, Bob has to wait for his ride, I can go home. Dick, if you'd run the meeting in there, then when it comes out, if you have any action to take, or just adjourn the meeting, if you do that, too. There you go. Thank you very much.
Okay. Mr. Lou says that we were in a meeting, talked about the union contract, and we gave the staff the direction. Anybody got any comments?
I hear adjournment.
I hear a motion for adjournment. We are adjourned.